The next message is going to be repeated in Spanish. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get select to speak during the first call, we encourage you to stay. To request to participate in public comment, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise your hand button to request to speak. When called upon, you will be unmuted. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. When called upon, once again, you will be unmuted and prompted to speak. The board president will call our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please add an S at the end of your name. If there are a lot of people who want to make public comment, once again, not everyone who raises their hand will get a chance to speak, but we do encourage you to stay until the end of the meeting. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at two or three minutes per speaker and on an individual basis, she also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other needs. When your time has elapsed, you will hear your time is up. If you are still speaking, please finish your sentence, but do not go beyond the time. There are really important issues that the community feels very passionate about. In order to be fair and to hear from as many of you as possible, we ask that you please adhere to these guidelines. Thank you. I will provide a brief summary detailing the order of this reunion. After some preliminary procedures, a period of 30 minutes will be dedicated to public comments. At the end of the call, which usually happens after 10:00, there will be a second and last opportunity for those who did not participate during the first call. For example, when they are not participating during the first call, they may have to use the telephone. To comment through video conference, click on the button "Participants" in the bottom of your screen and select the button "Raise Your Hand" to request to speak. When called upon, you will be unmuted. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. When called upon, once again, you will be unmuted and prompted to speak. The board president will call our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please add an S at the end of your name. If there are a lot of people who want to make public comment, once again, not everyone who raises their hand will get a chance to speak, but we do encourage you to stay until the end of the meeting. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at two or three minutes per speaker and on an individual basis, she also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other needs. When your time has elapsed, you will hear your time is up. If you are still speaking, please finish your sentence, but do not go beyond the time. There are really important issues that the community feels very passionate about. In order to be fair and to hear from as many of you as possible, we ask that you please adhere to these guidelines. Thank you. I will provide a brief summary detailing the order of this reunion. After some preliminary procedures, a period of 30 minutes will be dedicated to public comments. At the end of the call, which usually happens after 10:00, there will be a second and last opportunity for those who did not participate during the first call. To comment through video conference, click on the button "Participants" in the bottom of your screen and select the button "Raise Your Hand" to request to speak. When called upon, you will be unmuted. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. Great, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
Okay, I heard from Director Leyva first and then I'm going to have it seconded by Director Vice President Alper. What?
You heard Trump.
That was you? I'm sorry, I thought I saw... Sorry. So Director Brown made the motion and Director Alper is seconding it. Liz, do you want to take the role?
Sure thing. Director Brown? Yes. Director Leyva Cutler?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
President Appel?
Yes. Fabulous. So now we're going to have a report back on closed session and that's going to be done by our vice president, Vice President Alper.
Thank you, President Appel. In... Sorry, item 3.1.1, OAH, case number 20020050100. There was a motion to approve the staff recommendation by myself, Vice President Alper, seconded by Director Leyva Cutler, all voted in favor and the motion passed 5 to 0. Item 3.2, anticipated litigation. There was a motion by Director Brown to approve the staff recommendation, seconded by Director Sinai. All voted in favor and the motion passed 5 to 0. Item 3.3.1, collective bargaining, BCC-E, the board heard an update. Item 3.3.2, collective bargaining, BFT, the board heard an update. Item 3.4, public employment, the board heard an update and gave direction. And that concludes the report from closed session. Back over to you, President Appel.
Thank you, Vice President Alper. Next, we're going to go to public comment. I only see one hand up and that's Lori D. So why don't you go ahead and you can have the full three minutes, Lori?
Well, hi, everyone. It's Lori Droste.
Oh, hey, Lori.
It's so nice to see you virtually and I wanted to call in today because, you know, and I haven't planned my remarks, but I just want to say I was talking with my wife today and we were so pleased the way this transition has gone. Already feels like so much more relief and I know that you, as elected officials, hear a lot of concerns and I, you know, I still want to acknowledge and validate those, but I know perhaps you don't hear positive comments very often. And so I just wanted to let you know that at least my two kids are really excited about the school year. We've had some great art classes and science classes. Having the classroom meetings every day has been terrific and it really has relieved a lot of stress in our family. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to give my second public comment ever at a school board meeting to let you know that I understand the difficulties and there will be difficulties and I'm sure tweaks and improvements to make along the way, but I just really want to acknowledge your work and let you know, at least from our family here, that it's been just like night and day and really want to acknowledge and thank you for your tireless work.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Droste. Did somebody else want to say something? I'm sorry.
President Appel, can we put her on the agenda every week?
She might... We can put her there. I'm not sure she's going to show up every week, but that would be good.
We'll just record that. We'll just play that, a recording of that comment each week.
I think what you're hearing is that we really appreciate that because, as you know, you're right. Like people let us know when they have concerns, as they well should, and it's nice to hear that things are going well. All right, so I see no other public comments, which is kind of amazing. So next, we're going to go to union comments. And I don't... I haven't had a chance to look and see, is there anyone? I know that Matt Myers did send something that he's asked us to play as his public comment, but I want to see if there's any other public comment from BCC-E 21 or the principals. I don't see anything. So Liz, are you able to... Are you able to show that video?
I'm ready. I'm ready to do it.
Okay, great.
Just share my screen.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Jay.
Oh.
What?
Let's see, here we go.
Good evening, Dr. Stevens and the Berkeley School Board. Although our community faces many challenges this year, we are optimistic that we can provide top-quality education to all students in Berkeley. Throughout the summer, we worked closely with the district to come up with a distance learning plan that can meet the needs of our diverse student body. I want to give a special shout out to my team, Kathy Campbell, Angela Reid, Janine Waddell, and Cynthia Allman, who gave up their summers to make sure we were prepared for this year. I also want to recognize the district team who put in many hours to collectively come up with the best plans we could. Dr. Stevens, Samantha Tobias Espinoza, Debbie Dean, Juan Regosa, Natasha Berry, Maria Carrillo, and Mary Kasdan, among others, all worked with us all summer long through many difficult problems. And of course, our dedicated teachers, who spent much of their summer learning new skills, creating new curriculum, and getting ready to welcome students to a new virtual learning world. Together, we are making the best out of a seemingly impossible situation. We are grateful to the Berkeley Public School Fund and community volunteers who are working tirelessly to close the gaps between what the district can provide and what our students and families need. We also recognize that this work would need to continue. Our creative juices are flowing, but we know that the classroom experience cannot just be replicated online. Some of our structures may not achieve our desired outcomes in their current forms. This work will be ongoing as we learn what is working and what is not working. We are committed to reflect on how things are going and will work with the district to improve distance learning as we gather more data on our successes and shortcomings. Tonight's discussion will focus on updated board policies. I have strong reservations about the board policy being proposed on the topic of incompatible employment. Although we all agree that employees should not be working other jobs during the duty day or using the district's trademark without permission, the section on limiting tutoring after the teaching day has ended does not make sense as written. It does a disservice to our students and families while mutely eliminating our employees' ability to earn a living. The intent of this language is to make sure students are being served equitably, specifically when school is not in session. We applaud that goal and hope that BUSD will continue to support teachers who are striving to keep their focus on the students who are most vulnerable and need the most support, but the ideas proposed are overkill. As the policy is written, no employee may tutor any student in the district for compensation at any time. The problem with this limitation is that there are classes at the secondary level in which very few people have the content knowledge to tutor effectively. Families hire tutors because their students need help. General tutoring provided by the district during teachers' duty hours does not meet that need for many upper-level high school classes. The reality is that some students need one-on-one help from a professional educator, not just a college student for hire. It is our students who will be disserved by this policy. Additionally, this language prevents private music lessons. Our music teachers work with students and their families who want to pursue music seriously. We do not offer extra music tutoring as an alternative. More doesn't make sense in the nuanced world of music to have two different instructors. Furthermore, these private music lessons are built on longstanding student-teacher relationships. These relationships were established pre-pandemic and should not end because of concerns about education pods. It will be a disservice to our students and to pull their instructors away from them. Because of AB5, our music coaches, who work only two to five hours a week, are now employees instead of independent contractors. Private lessons are their livelihood and they would quit working for the district if this policy went into effect. There may be others, like athletic coaches or teaching artists, who would lose if they fit into this category. Some of these employees have been with the district for over 10 years. The incompatible employment policy should be rewritten to specifically address valid district concerns rather than paint such a broad stroke unnecessarily limiting opportunities for students to receive help and teachers to provide it. On a positive note, we just tallied up the vote in the distance learning MOU between BUSD and BFT, cast with overwhelming support. Although already, we are hearing positive stories from our classrooms in just three days in. We are committed to making this work and look forward to being able to talk about our many successes by the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Matt. I know you're not here, but thank you anyway. I don't see any other union reps, do you? Are there any? Jay or... I guess Jay is managing the list, I don't know. All right. Huh?
I do not see any.
All right, so let's move on to board member comments or committee comments. Are there any committees represented? I don't see anyone. I mean, nobody has their hand up. Raise your hand if you want to speak on behalf of the committee that you represent. Okay, so seeing none, I'm going to move on to board member and superintendent comments. Let me put this up and then I'll just call you in the order I see you. Okay. Why don't I go and start with you, Director Leyva Cutler? Because I know you love to go first.
I was thinking you would do that. Well, first of all, I want to welcome the families. Bienvenidas a las familias to distance learning in our first three days and it's exciting. I'm seeing children. My childcare center is open, so I've been seeing children coming in and excited about learning and excited about programming too. A little amount of children too, so it's not a lot of children, but I see the families are excited about their children doing their distance learning and connecting with their teachers and new teachers. I also am seeing that with my two granddaughters in both the middle school and the high school. So I get a preview in terms of their experience. So thank you very much for the work, all this summer that our teachers and our IAs and classified and our district staff have done to make these days successful. And we're just starting, pace ourselves. And of course, all these lovely summer days now come when everybody has to go back to school, right? So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Director Leyva Cutler. Now I'm going to call on Student Director Miller.
Um, I would also like to say from the student perspective that although distance learning was not the way we intended to start the school year, I have a lot of students saying that it is a lot more effective than what happened last spring. Students are already complimenting that there's a more consistent schedule and they feel like they're being more prepared. So that is a positive and I would definitely say from the student perspective, just from my own classes, that this definitely feels a lot better than what was happening before. So kudos to all of us.
All right, thank you very much. Next, I'm going to call on Vice President Alper.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Director Sinai?
Good evening. I really want to extend my sincere appreciation to BFT and the team and the district team for really working out what so far has become a really good experience. And so I just... The tireless work over the summer and the persistence around it, I just want to extend sincere appreciation. And I really want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to all of the family members, the parents and the guardians, whether your teachers, whether your staff, whether your essential workers. You know, to be able to juggle your students, your child's education while you're also working, I have great appreciation and knowledge of how hard that is and that, you know, we're doing everything we can to try to make it as smooth as possible, but there is no doubt whatsoever that this is taking a Herculean effort on every parent and guardian and close family member that is involved in this. And I just... I want to thank you for your patience. I want to thank you for your determination and, you know, and we'll continue to work on this together. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Director Brown?
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say thank you so much to the... Those of you who sent emails either directly to me or to the rest of the board about your experience this week with distance learning. It has definitely been a challenge. I want to recognize that there may be some learning gaps that we encounter on a day-to-day basis, but I would like to echo my colleague Director Sinai's sentiments that you all have been doing a phenomenal job and it hasn't been an easy road. But thank you so much for your participation, for your full participation, both from... Well, from every single stakeholder in our district community. I would just have to take this time to acknowledge specifically our teachers. Teaching on Zoom is not for the faint of heart. It's a difficult task, but you all have been doing it and doing it well and that speaks volumes to the types of educators that we have in our school district and how lucky we are to have you, but more importantly, how lucky our students are to have you. So thank you so much for starting off the week in a really strong way. Thank you to our superintendent and staff for all of the work that you did over the summertime to ensure that we could start off on the right foot. I appreciate it, we all appreciate it, and I look forward to having an excellent year. So welcome back and happy first week.
Thank you, Director Brown. I think that is everybody but me. Did I miss anyone? Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and say, I mean, it's going to be a little repetitive, but I feel like I also want to say just how... Just how grateful I am to all the families and all the employees of BUSD for how hard you are working to support our students. You know, I've been thinking a lot about like what's... What it would... Because my kids are now older, but you know, the experience of having kids in elementary or middle or high school at this point and like trying to like navigate how to make it through the... Like there's this big kind of scary thing out there in the world. Everything is different and then, you know, now school is different. And, you know, I'm really happy to hear all the good stories. I know that not everybody is, you know, I know some people are having struggles. And so I just really appreciate like the love that families and the community is having to put into supporting our students. That being said, I also, you know, we talk a lot here, I've talked a lot here, about how the administration and the district have done a lot of great work to set up the framework and I do really appreciate that. And none of this would be possible if we didn't have such dedicated and great teachers and classified staff and other people in our school community who are really, you know, they're really, really putting in their real effort to try to provide the best possible experience for our students. And, you know, none of us, none of them really had any training or preparation about how to do this. I mean, it's kind of using the skills from teaching an in-person classroom and then trying to apply it to, you know, to Zoom, which, you know, I think if, you know, if Director Brown is talking about how hard that can be for her, you know, and she's a fairly... You know, she's a fairly young...
Excellent teacher.
And excellent, and excellent teacher, but you know, but she's also probably more familiar with the technology than a lot of older teachers. And so I just really, really have to put out a big thank you to our teachers and our classified staff who are really, really working to support our students because that's our goal. And, you know, we'll see how the next... The next, you know, the next six or eight weeks go, but it seems like we've gotten off to a good start and I'm just super, super proud to, you know, to be a part of this district. So Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you very much, President Appel. I'm going to start first by echoing Director Brown's comments that Director Brown is an excellent teacher. I, on behalf of the board and all the staff, I also want to welcome all of our families and students back to school. We are starting this year under extraordinary circumstances, whether it's distance learning or an air quality event, fires, a heat wave, the threat of power outages, all of these things that we are demonstrating as a community, we are capable of meeting. There are many, many people to thank as we launch the school year and so I'd love to just take a moment to do that. First, to our BFT partners, to Matt Meyer, to Kathy Campbell and all of the bargaining team, please know that we're very appreciative and recognize that every one of you gave up the summers that you had so well-earned to stay engaged on behalf of teachers and students to be able to produce the distance learning plan that we're now working with this year. And then to the folks over the summer who in central office also continue to work very hard, oftentimes with not a single day of break. So they are, and I'll name a few folks on the bargaining team, Debbie Dean, Samantha Tobias Espinoza, Natasha Berry, Mary Kasdan, Juan Regosa, Maria Carrillo, and Josh Reed, among others, who made cameo appearances to help us sort out details. So thank you to all of you. There were a number of teams as well that continued to work through the summer. So to our entire facilities, maintenance, and operations team, who clean buildings, who were putting back together our grounds and who are generally making sure that we were well-prepared in a physical sense.
Thanks, Doris, wants me to invent a better astronaut.
Thank you to all of your work over the course of the summer. Nutrition Services, we continue to plow through. All of our partners at the Ed Hub worked throughout the summer to provide resources to our families and had a banner day today as, as I understand, dozens of families came. And then our Ed Services team, including Bajie Tiara, all of our newly appointed administrators worked throughout the summer to prepare professional development and programs for this year. And then finally, our Business Services team and Natasha Follinsby, sorry, Pauline Follinsby, who was busy meeting deadlines over the course of the summer as well. So thank you. A quick little anecdote, I had a chance to drop by Emerson School, actually dropped by in person and visit the classroom teachers who were in their classrooms today, either teaching or engaged in family meetings. What I saw among the five or six staff members who were there really astounded me. I was able to watch some very personal hand-holding as teachers worked individually with students to make sure that they had their logins, that they understood how to operate in Google Classroom, that they knew how to raise their hands. They were showing them how clever worked and they were also working with parents to begin to prep for the use of Remind. Over at Sylvia Mendez School, I had the chance just to interrupt a couple of these family meetings, introduce myself to the families through Zoom, say a quick hello, and it was really gratifying to see smiles on families' faces as they were sitting together and getting to know their teacher for the new school year. So for all of those very small moments of empathy and care that our educators are expressing towards students and families, thank you so much. It's that empathy and care that really makes Berkeley a unique place to work and learn and please know that it's noted and appreciated. And then finally, I'll notice just a quick little note about today's consent calendar. It is the case that each year, we annually approve contracts for what are called non-public schools, residential treatment centers. And so folks who are paying attention to the details of this particular agenda will notice that those items are included here this evening. So with that, my thanks and welcome back to school, everyone.
Yes, welcome back to school, everyone. That almost brought tears to my eyes, Brent. That was... It gives... It offers hope. All right, so now we are going to go on to the consent calendar. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'm moved.
Moved by Vice President Alper is her second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Sinai. So... Director Brown? Oh, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Director Leyva Cutler?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
President Appel? Yes. All right, so now we will move on to the next item, which is not coming up on my... Sorry, you guys, I don't have a printout of this today. We next... I guess the next thing is discussion items. So Brent, I mean, Superintendent Stevens, why don't you take us through?
Yeah, thank you very much, President Appel. So we're very happy to be able to offer an update to the Board of Education this evening on the professional development that we organized over the course of the summer. I'd like to introduce a few people to be able to lead this presentation. So first, Associate Superintendent Bajie Tiara, who leads the Education Services team. And then joining us tonight is our brand-new coordinator of TK through grade eight professional development, Ms. Lita Martinez, welcome to you, welcome to Berkeley. And then Jessica Lee is the coordinator of our Library Services program and she also supports the Digitech team that is responsible for so much of the technology-oriented professional development in our district. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Tiara for the presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and I hope everyone is doing well during these times. Thank you for being here tonight. The Educational Services Division launched professional development with the focus on preparing educators for distance learning. Both certificated and classroom instructional staff were given the opportunity to engage in a two-week supplemental PD series that was offered between July 27th and August 8th. This series included over 100 live sessions with over 500 participants. Tonight's presentation will feature the professional development offerings, feedback from participants, and a closer look at sessions that supported both our diverse learners and our focal student groups, all of which could not have been done without the leadership of both Jessica Lee and Adalita Martinez. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Director of Technology Jay Nitschke and Director of Schools Debbie Dean for ensuring a successful Before the Bell launch. Thank you. I'll hand it over to both Jessica and Adalita.
Hey, I'm going to share my screen.
Great.
Good evening.
So as I said, my name's Jessica Lee. I'm the coordinator of Library Services and I've been leading the Instructional Technology Team and I'm here with Adalita. Do you want to say a quick hi?
Hi, good evening, glad to be here.
And as you know, education's in sort of an impossible situation right now and we were given the impossible task of guiding our staff into this somehow. So over the summer, we set up to design some professional development opportunities that would deepen the understanding and ensure that we met the needs of learners, of all learners, and specifically our underserved populations. And some of the training involved how to use technology platforms along with content to promote student engagement and discourse, how to develop student agency, resilience, intrinsic motivation and mental wellness, trauma-informed practices, and social-emotional learning. trauma-informed practices and social-emotional learning, as well as creating community and relevance in a digital classroom. And then there was also work in repacing guides, and Adalita will speak a little bit more about those repacing guides for math, English Language Arts, science, and history and social studies. So we invested in a new tool for scheduling because we were, we wanted to offer a wide range of possible professional development opportunities, and we wanted everyone to know all of the options. And so we found a tool called SKED, which is used in, by a lot of large conferences. Comic-Con uses it, it's also used for small conferences and workshops. And thank you, Jay Nitschke and the tech team for setting this up for us. I'm going to pop over to that website so you can see what it actually looked like and take a glance at all of these different sessions that we led. So it is like a calendar, and you can click on any of the titles for more information. I'm just going to scroll through mostly to give you a sense of just the, the quantity. We put together over 100, let me, I think it was 112 sessions that averaged, I think, 34 people per session. So it was very well-attended, some of the sessions had over 100 people in them. And so it was just, it was a lot of learning opportunities for our staff. And I'm just going to jump up real quick to the top so you can see that there were, you know, there are all these pretty colors, I want to show you what those mean. So the, sorry. So we had, you know, the salmon, which was the most common, were the sessions that were made for all grade levels. Gold were for high school, there were some that were focused on middle school, some for elementary school, et cetera, and broken down by grade bands. So you can see, like, zoom back out, the, just the, the, the range that was offered every single day. And like, if we look at one particular day, let's look at this one, we have sessions that focus on, sorry, community building, on curriculum content like math or PE or reading and writing. We have specific online tools like ST Math and Brain Pop, so those are like online tools that teachers can use. Some of these, most of these sessions were led by BUSD teachers, and some of them were also led by, like, I believe the Brain Pop one, for example, was a representative from the company did a training specifically for Berkeley around using that tool. And then there were some tools that were also offered by, or some trainings that were offered by like the California Teachers Association or other outside agencies that we incorporated in this. Teachers were paid to attend this, and they were optional.
We, can we just add, we also invited substitutes and instructional assistants, so there wasn't just teachers.
Yeah. And so when you hear, there were 528 participants, but most of those participants attended multiple sessions. So when we looked at the responses, we had almost 2,500 responses, so that means over 2,500 hours of PD that was delivered during these two weeks. This breaks down, basically, it's a lot of colors, meaning that participants were coming from every school site. It's not a surprise that the largest chunk was from Berkeley High School, which is our largest facility. Adalita and I did work directly with Berkeley High's professional development team that they have that's specifically for the high school to make sure that the high school needs were built into this program as well.
Great.
The bulk of attendees were these BFT members, so our teaching staff, but there were also significant representation from BCC East, specifically our instructional assistants and IT's instruction, I'm not sure what that stands for. And as well as some administrators and subs were, were encouraged to attend. And there were some people who came in from the preschools and the adult schools, there was a very wide range of people who participated. And what was very heartwarming was that after every session, people were asked to fill out a feedback survey. And this summarizes the simple question of how useful was this session for you, and they could rate it one to five stars. And one of the most challenging things about professional development is that sense that you're wasting people's time. But this feedback showed us that overall, staff felt that the professional development that was offered was not a waste of time. The, the, the majority of the responses were four to five stars for, for the professional development opportunities. And I will add that I, I don't have the, the total data to back this up, but just looking at the more negative reviews, most of those were for sessions that were led by outside presenters, and that the sessions that were led by, by Berkeley teachers were the ones that Berkeley teachers really appreciated. And that's a lesson that we've learned for years from professional development within the schools, is that teachers want to hear from other teachers who can really understand their experiences. And I should note that this, this whole event was put together with, I think we had 10 days of planning time to, to, to make it happen, and part of what made it so successful was the willingness and the eagerness of Berkeley teachers to jump in and lead sessions and share their expertise and their knowledge with their, their fellow teachers and staff. So we wanted to play a short video that's going to show you just a few tiny clips from, from some of the sessions. Most of the sessions were recorded so that people can watch them later if they weren't able to attend the sessions. So I'm just going to play, it's about four minutes long, and it's just snippets of people's presentations. They did not realize at the time that we were going to pull out parts of their presentations and play it for the public, whoops. So this one focuses on like active participation. And then this is again looking for active participation, this time PE in a limited space. There were trainings on specific digital tools. We also provided additional resources and ongoing support beyond the PD.
This is what the Digitech website looks like, on the front, there's this banner that says professional development. If you click on that, it takes you to a page that's specifically about professional development. We'll always have our trainings that are scheduled up at the top of that, and then below that you'll see like, there are pages for each of the primary tools that we use, and even a getting started page as a quick introduction.
And showing how content-specific work around curriculum areas.
Things that little, little kids can do, like the drawings and listening, they can learn all about science just through storybooks, I mean.
Yeah, no, we, I think science is, I think it's a subject that has worked the most, the most well in distance learning, because it pans on, I mean, kids get excited about cooking, and so they share videos of recipes that they've cooked and, you know, talk, and then they dictate, you know, recording all the different steps and then drawing. So yeah, science has been, I think, a really exciting point for them.
Kind of imagine.
I did that a little bit today, so I put some Theresa Will stuff in, Carrie.
I saw that, you have some of her pre-made slides.
Yeah, and I let it through, I let everybody through it, so they got a small taste of what she, what she was presenting today. So I did it just a couple of times during it, just to give everybody an idea of something they could use.
And again, using technology to enhance lessons. And strategies for student interaction. So that was just a whirlwind that hopefully gave you a sense of what the PD was like. Sometimes it was people talking, sometimes it was slides, sometimes it was samples, sometimes it was videos. And all those were woven together in different ways to present the content for the, for the staff. So this is some of the feedback we got from participants. It was full of strategies to increase student engagement and learning. The session gave me specific techniques that are going to make distance learning more interactive for students. That was one of the challenges that teachers really struggled with in the spring. Students will be able to collaborate more with their peers, and I'll be able to solicit more feedback from them about how much they're learning through the tech and teacher moves shown today. This was so good, it's so nice to get the positive responses. It was emphasized that as teachers, we need to not only make sure the voices of our black and brown students are heard, but that they are valued and understood. I will keep this as a central focus throughout the year. And it helped me immensely to understand what to expect in this new world of distance learning and prepare accordingly. That last comment is, I'm excited to teach social studies in a culturally inclusive way, and I love the idea of having students take ownership of their learning by adding people and events they're interested in learning more about.
We also want to highlight sessions that engaged our participants in discussions and learning specifically around meeting the needs of our underserved, underserved student populations. This was a session around student engagement and math discourse, but specifically around not just navigating the technology in terms of the digital tools, but reinforcing that engagement doesn't mean rote drill, it doesn't mean that it's rote practice, that all students deserve meaningful, enriched tasks, especially our struggling students. Next slide. Many of our sessions brought in actual brain research around trauma-informed practices. And so this is an example of some thinking around how do we, as educators, support the resiliency that many of our students come with, our students that are English learners, our students with IUPs, our students of color, and how do we build upon their strengths? Next slide. Again, there were sessions specifically around students with IUPs. And so what does full inclusion look like, what can it look like via distance learning? And here you have an example of how do we ensure that all students can ask access asynchronous assignments? And how do we differentiate online to promote access and engagement of all students? We know that, you know, our brain works when we're able to make connections, and that's a struggle right now via the Zoom platforms or Google Meets, and so mental, mental wellness was also embedded in many of the sessions. And so how do we make sure that, you know, we're, we're dealing and engaging students around issues around being disconnected? And how do we build community and build that safety so that students are present in their learning and active, active participants in their learning? How do we create, so, you know, thinking about digital citizenship, and how do we create hands-on experiences? And, and also build relationships, and, you know, we, we do that, you know, in the classroom, and then how do we create that virtually so that our students continue, you know, to have positive experiences and also build relationships with their peers, with their teachers via distance learning? We wanted to promote and engage our participants in discussions around agency. And agency is something that's very critical, especially thinking around distance learning, and this is an example of Maslow's triangle based on the five essential components of need. And so we engaged, again, thinking and discussions around brain research and brain science, and what happens to the brain when you're stressed, and what, you know, how cortisol level can build up. And so because of that, we need to be intentional, we need to be strategic so that we can make it possible for students to access the part of the brain that deals with things like executive function, that deals with things in terms of dealing with stress in positive ways. And again, in thinking of our underserved student populations, you know, how do we develop culturally responsive teaching? And this is significant, and so some discussions and thinking and being very strategic and intentional about how do we transform the educational experiences for all of our students. And as part of the summer work, which kind of connects to the, the professional development was work around a repacing guides, we had over 80 teachers engage in reworking, rewriting, revising our pacing guides. And so the process was that we looked at essential and power standards for each of the content areas, math, science, English Language Arts, history, and social studies. Creating pacing that's focusing on lessons and units that address these essential standards, and building weekly big ideas that can support students and families around the focus of the week to again create that agency and support the agency around learning. We wanted to make sure as part of the process that we ensured that there are opportunities and time to implement the English Language Arts portraits, Common Core, and the Common Core Math and Science practices, and so that those are implemented, that students are engaging in active conversations, they're analyzing, they're justifying, predicting. And then we also wanted to make sure that the first three to four weeks were around building community, building a sense of identity, learning the technology, but how does the technology help you learn? And then again, social-emotional support are all a part of the repacing work. And I think more specifically is we, we looked at some of the abolitionist teaching network, which talks about, you know, giving ourselves and giving our students permission to slow down, but that we're also making our, our instruction that it's student-centered. And we created a Berkeley Unified Google site that houses the repacing work but that, for elementary and middle school, and that can continue the conversations around the pacing guides, but next-level type of work. How do we continue to foster conversations and engage in collaboration, grade alike across sites around this notion of repacing and what that means and looks like in practice, and so that ongoing work as well. So we wanted to create a site that has those resources.
Excuse me, Lita, I, this is amazing, and it's very, very, it's, it's really interesting and impactful, but we are a little short on time, so if maybe you can take a couple minutes to wrap it up, that would be great.
I'm wrapping it up right now, thank you for that. And so looking ahead quickly, next steps that we, like Jessica mentioned, we recorded our sessions so that our participants are, you know, that weren't able to access, all of the sessions can continue to engage in learning. In looking ahead, we're continuing conversations and integration across district departments, specifically with the Tech Department and Ed Services as we continue collaboration with teachers. So grade-alike groups to. So grade alike groups to deepen the learning. And again, the repacing to move the work forward. And last but not least, conversations and support around education for families. We're hosting our first professional development with families next Tuesday. So we want to make sure that we're continuing to support the work through our, supporting our families as well. And that's our wrap up. And so if there are any questions and answers, we hope to have some.
So are there any questions? Let's see, I'm gonna go to my participant list and just raise your hand if you're, you know, somebody that's a panelist and you have a question. Director Sinek.
Hi, thank you. This has been a great presentation. I really enjoyed looking at the wide variety of what professional development is going on. I'm wondering if you developed anything that was tailored in the sense for Ophi and our family engagement folks? Like if there were any tools that we're looking at for them and not just training parents on how to use the tools, but also strategies for using the technology to connect with families?
And so I'm working closely with Anne. We met and we're going to be actually offering many sessions with Ophi. Our first will be this coming Tuesday, which is around creating an environment in your home for distance learning. And there are other topics for other sessions around mathematics. How do we create that space in our home that is now kind of the school? And so I am in contact and communication and collaboration with Ophi. And excited to say that two of our families, parents of Berkeley, will be helping me to facilitate our session on Tuesday. So we're definitely trying to increase that collaboration with that organization.
Great. So maybe I could just clarify, I'm just curious, like, are the Ophi staff getting any specialized training for their use of the tools?
That, we did not incorporate that within these two weeks of professional development. That was some feedback from Anne from Ophi. And so we are collaborating and thinking about how we can do that, yes.
I want to add that those two weeks were specifically focused on instructional techniques, that that was the emphasis. And there are a lot of other departments and a lot of other staff who are getting additional training, but that's outside of those particular two weeks.
Great. I'm gonna call on Director Leva Cutler.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I think it's something that we've all wanted to peek into to see what's happening. And it looks like it was very successful. Thank you for sharing that. In the feedback that our teachers were giving and our staff are giving on these trainings, what came up in terms of reflections, in terms of what they found they would like more of? Or they found we'd like to expand more on or include for the next round of trainings? Or that our teachers are asking for?
That was one of the questions we asked in the feedback forum was what, you know, what's the next step? What more do you want? And overwhelmingly, the feedback was more professional development. And then within that, there were, you know, people named specific tools, but also looking at, I think the most, the greatest desire right now is to look at a tool in conjunction with curriculum. And so that's really our goal for the rest of the school year is having like the people who are guiding the technology trainings, working directly with, say, the lit coaches or working directly with the math teachers and building capacity around both tools and curriculum working together.
Jessica, can you ensure your screen?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I, two of the comments in terms of, it would be nice if you included the preschool and the resources for teachers, because many of our teachers have preschoolers and, you know, versus go on to another site. There's a lot of great stuff that I saw the preschool teachers have done in terms of distance learning for young children ages three to five. So I really, they should, it's part of our school. So, you know, the continuum of learning from preschool through high school. The other in terms of the PD in Spanish for our ELD students and teachers who are teaching English language, was there a strong focus on that in terms of having support? Especially having the dual language program at Sylvia Mendez and at Longfellow.
There were not any sessions that were specifically targeting two-way immersion, again, during that session. Any of the teachers from Sylvia Mendez and Longfellow, they were invited to lead a session on that, but no one opted to. And, but again, those two weeks are not the end-all. I want to keep emphasizing that, that this will continue. But English language learners and English language development were themes throughout many of the sessions. And like, there was a focus on making sure that content was accessible for a wide variety of learners.
Just quickly to also build on that is I did meet with Sylvia Mendez's staff as part of the repacing work. And they are taking the repacing work that was done district-wide and then modifying and revising based on the specific needs of the site. And so that is work that went into some of the summer and the repacing. And I supported that effort as well. And asked for input in terms of some sessions that they would like. And I think that within what we were able to offer in the two weeks was kind of what they felt they needed. And then again, the ongoing collaboration time among themselves to continue the conversations and the learning.
I have another question, but I'll let another board member go.
Well, I just have one question, which is, so this was amazing. And I'm sorry I cut you off, Lita. I was just trying to, like, you know, facilitate. But this is really rich. And I think that we have all expressed a lot of interest and hope that we're gonna be providing really rich professional development. And this felt really very useful. And I guess my other question is, what system do you have in place when a teacher comes up with, they want to teach something, like they've taught X thing forever, like to their fourth graders? Like they've made something about the government. And so they have an idea about how to do that with an interactive tool? Or they want an idea? So do you guys have set up someone who they can talk to? Are there resource people who they can talk to? To just talk through the ideas for certain lessons?
Jessica, I know there's, no, go ahead, go ahead, Jessica. Wasn't sure if you wanted to. So most departments have a, like a TSA, a teacher on special assignment that leads that department essentially, or is like the resource and support for that department. And so that would be the first person to go to. But also when we do sort of these large-scale professional development, like we did a week back in June, and then these two weeks, July and August, there is sort of a call out to teachers saying, is there something you want to share? So it's a little bit of both, like they have someone that they can go to as well as being invited to just jump in and lead a session.
Maybe I'll turn that over to you, Brent, or Bajay, because it seems like maybe that's not the professional development department's job. But I do want to make sure that there is some way that, you know, the teachers are, have been teaching, especially teachers that have been teaching for a long time. And now, like, they want to turn this great thing that they've been doing forever with their fourth graders into something they can do remotely. And I just, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity for them, you know, to talk to some of their peers, to talk to, I don't, you know, that that's kind of built in.
Oh, collaboration is built into the weekly schedule for every teacher across the board. Like, there's onsite collaboration, there's department and grade level collaboration. So like, all, you know, the fourth grade teachers sit and they talk about their curriculum, well, not together anymore, but, you know. And that's been going on from before distance learning. And then the schedule this year has more time for that because it is so very necessary.
Director Leva Cutler? Well, actually, let me go to Director Brown, because you've already spoken. Director Brown?
Thank you. I just want to give an appreciation for your presentation. It was really phenomenal. It was especially great to hear, or to see, rather, the videos of, the recap videos of the teachers teaching their professional development sessions and hearing them use the they say, I say tools. And, you know, teaching our teachers some of the same practices or pedagogy that they use in their classroom. So that was really phenomenal. Maybe I missed this, but I wanted to ask, is there a special place where these videos are being housed? Not just for teachers, but if we decide to maybe extend it to other community members who may learn from some of the teaching practices and be able to apply them at home? Especially now because our families have become sort of teacher assistants in their own way at home. Is there a way that these practices could be comprised and shared out? Or is that something that you could think about maybe for the future?
These particular videos are behind the Berkeley.net sign-in. And part of that is just, that tends to be our policy with a lot of internal documents, is that they're available for everyone within Berkeley.net, but not necessarily put out to the public. We would need to get a lot of permissions. And part of it is also in development, professional development, that we want our teachers to feel comfortable using student work and real examples as much as possible. And if we were to make it open to the public, we couldn't do that. So we would have to vet each particular piece individually and make sure it was okay, which is a lot of work. So I'm a little nervous about doing that. And I really want our resources to be available for our staff to see as much as possible. But as Lita mentioned earlier, there is a parent training sessions that are being developed and are going to be recorded and shared as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Director Leva Cutler, I see you took your hand down. Did you?
I think my question is more around the full inclusion and how much that was incorporated into many of those distance learning trainings that we have, because not all classes would have students who are, you know, special ed. And, you know, was there that kind of integration into those trainings?
Well, there were some members of the special ed department who led training specifically focused on special ed support. And then also because many of our trainings were led by Berkeley teachers, they all come from the experience of working in full inclusion classrooms. So even if their training isn't specifically about full inclusion, that's the experience and that's what they're teaching for. So they might, they might not say full inclusion in their description. But we, as teachers, know that teaching in Berkeley is teaching in a full inclusion school, if that makes sense. So like if I were leading, like I led a session on audiobooks, for example. And part of that talks about students with IEPs and students who are developing English and all of that. But those particular terms aren't in the description, they're just built into the session itself.
Yes, I think we had this conversation before in terms of, is there teachers doing a presentation? Is there a rubric that the teacher says, you know, I have to make sure that I cover this, you know, that, you know, and addressing my students who are full inclusion, I'm doing some ELD in the classroom. So there's a checkoff list of things, and, you know, there's equity involved also, you know, recognizing children of, you know, who are African-American, like using your classrooms. Is there something like that when teachers do their distance learning? Were there students that they are saying, I'm getting all these points?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, we didn't, but I, I, I hate to say like, but they do that. But I will say that I watched many, many sessions to pull out those clips, and so did Lita. And I have to say that in almost everyone I saw, there was a mention of social justice and there was a mention of English language development. And again, because, because the teachers bring that. So you're right that it would be ideal for us to give them expectations and a rubric. I have to, I have to say mostly we were saying, will you please present? And thank you for doing it. Yeah.
And as we move forward, we can definitely refine the process. And we are asking for presenters. I think this time around, it was an all-call. If you're interested, please just self-submit and let us know what you want to share. But definitely moving forward, we can definitely put some guidelines and provide some guidance around that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was really, really just so exciting to hear. I'm, you know, I feel like professional development honestly is, it's like the, you know, we can say anything we want, but if we are not really preparing our teachers or our staff, you know, it's, they're just, it can't happen. So I really, really appreciate your thoughtfulness and.
And the platform is very good.
Yeah, the platform. Alrighty, so we are, thank you very much. And now we're gonna move on to our next item on the agenda, which is about my agenda. The overview of the learning continuity and attendance plan.
Brent, did you want me to start off?
If you'd be willing to, I appreciate that. It's yours.
Thank you. This is a second presentation from Ed Services. This evening, we present an update on Senate Bill 98, signed by Governor Newsom at the end of June, which includes requirements regarding distance learning, in-person instruction, and suspends a local and the local control and accountability plan, also known as the LCAP, for the 2020-21 school year. Other changes include the establishment of a new requirement, very similar to the LCAP, called the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, which we are calling the LCP. The purpose of the LCP is to provide a brief overview of how each school district will provide continuity of learning and address the impact of COVID-19 on pupil, staff, and the community. The California Department of Education released this template on August 1st and with the board adoption date of September 30th, so very tight timeline. Presenting tonight is Michelle Sinclair, Director of State, Federal, and Special Programs, who will walk us through the template, reporting requirements and associated timelines. Thank you, Michelle.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. It's great to be here tonight. My topic is not as exciting as professional development, but we have a lot to learn about it, so about my subject. So here we go. What I want to do in this presentation is let you know about changes to the LCAP, the current LCAP requirements. I'm gonna tell you about new education code pertaining to distance learning and the new environment. I'm gonna tell you about the new requirement, which is called the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And then I'm gonna give you an overview of the timeline for that plan and how it gets adopted, because it will need to be adopted. The purpose is to keep stakeholders like yourselves and our whole community informed and updated on these changes to ed code in this time of distance learning and COVID-19 and the possibility of hybrid learning. So at the end of June, Governor Newsom signed Senate Bill 98, and it changed accountability requirements for this school year. It suspends the LCAP as we know it. So we won't be doing that this year, but instead it establishes a new requirement. I shouldn't say that. The annual LCAP was delayed until December, and then they decided to cancel that last year's annual. We will be developing a new three-year plan. But for now, we have another new requirement, which is called the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. They have the same acronyms, which makes things very confusing. So I'm going to refer to the new plan as LCP rather than LCAP, just so you're prepared for that. The purpose is to provide, the purpose of the Learning Continuity Plan is to provide an overview of how the school district is providing the continuity of learning to address the impact of COVID-19 on our students, our staff, and the community as a whole. The plan, like I said, has to be adopted by September 30th, so it's on a very tight timeline. One of the big changes with SB 98 was the changes of instructional minutes. It lowered them for distance learning. For example, in grades one through three, it used to be 280 minutes per day, and it's now down to 230. So these are the numbers we were working with as we were developing our distance learning plan. The instructional days for the school year are remaining at 180 days. They've always been that. And they've changed that there is now no minimum physical education instructional minutes requirement like there used to be, although we are still providing PE. In teaching and learning, when you talk about instructional minutes, they're actually more inclusive of different things than we're used to. So instruction with the student and the instructor in different locations is the definition of distance learning. And it can include interaction, instruction, and check-ins, which would be normally on a live interaction type platform. a live interaction type platform, conferencing platform like Zoom or Meet. It could also include video or audio instruction. It can include use of print materials and use of online learning platforms. We've used Freckle or or things like that. The minutes, when we look at the minutes, we we are looking at live interaction and the time value of these other items that I just mentioned. These are changes that were, went into effect with SB 98. There are a lot more. And I, I'm, just to be brief here tonight, I'm going to go over some of the major ones. But I do encourage you to look at Senate Bill 98. It's fascinating. So one of them is that all students must have connectivity and devices. We are required to provide that as a district. Where we have to have live, daily live interaction for the purposes of instruction, for progress monitoring, and for maintaining school connectiveness, which is really the most important part. The district must provide nutritionally adequate meals for students who are eligible for free and reduced price meals. And the instructional content must be aligned to the grade level standards as we know them, and it must be substantially equivalent to in-person instruction. Academic support must be provided for students who are not performing at grade level or need support in other areas, such as English learners, low socioeconomic, foster, homeless, and students requiring mental health supports. Our special education services and IEPs must be able to be carried out through distance learning. Designated and integrated instruction and ELD must be included in our plan. Professional development and resources that provide teachers support with distance learning, including technology. And as you saw from our last presentation, we're doing that one for sure. The district must document daily participation, and this has been a tricky place for us. We're grappling with it right now. But we must document daily participation for each student each school day. And the daily instruction includes, like I said before, evidence of Zoom sessions, conferencing, online live interaction, completion of assignments, completion of assessments, contacts with students or parents, that counts too. That's a really vital piece of distance learning. Districts must develop tiered reengagement strategies for all students who are absent from distance learning for more than three days in a school week or 60%. So we are documenting, we are tracking attendance, and we're documenting participation, and we will respond to students who are falling off. So the new plan is called the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. Like I said, this is going to provide how, it's a document that tells the the community and the public how we are providing a continuity of learning, how we're impacting COVID-19 and the the stresses of that on the staff, students, and the community. That that actual document will include information on the staff roles and responsibilities and how they've changed the continuity of instruction, the pupil participation and progress, the pupil engagement and outreach, the support for students with unique needs, learning loss, how federal and state funding is used, and how the district is increasing or improving services based on the number and concentration of unduplicated students. Stakeholder engagement is a really important piece to this new requirement. The district must solicit recommendations and comments regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed in our plan. We have to provide the opportunity for written comments. And I will be presenting the Learning Continuity Plan to the Parent Advisory Committee, to D-LAC, and then it will also be brought to the board. So there's a timeline for that. August 1st, this is a very tight timeline, keep in mind. August 1st, the CDE released the template. On August 16th tonight, I'm presenting you with the changes. On September 1st, that will be the the PAC and D-LAC meetings, when I will, the the plan will actually be written in a draft form, but it will be presented and offered for feedback. On September 2nd, we'll have a public hearing at the board. And then on, between September 9th and 11th, we'll have it posted on our website. We'll solicit feedback from the community at large. And then September 16th is a proposed adoption date. And then September 30th, it goes to the county office. So it's tight. And that's it for me. So I have, I'm here to take some questions if you have them.
All righty, so do we have any questions for Michelle? That was really informative. Thank you. I have Director Leva Cutler. Her little blue hand up.
Yeah, I'm trying to hold on. Thank you. That's, this is, the short timeline is a pretty, a lot of work. So thank you very much for sending, giving us this information. I am curious in terms of how this, this Learning Continuity, Continuity and Attendance Plan will, how we will outline the, the population of our homeless students in terms of how we're serving them through distance learning and also our special populations. You know, it's through the LCAP, it looked like we can, you know, be more specific, but in distance learning, how how will that show up?
It asked, the the document asks specifically those questions that you were asking, and we are addressing them. And so things that will be in there is like how the structure of our our distance learning plan has time embedded in the the day for teachers to reach out, to, so actually to pull small groups, to pull targeted groups, to really focus on students who are experiencing learning loss. Where we now this year are have a whole plan for assessment using the STAR. So every student will be assessed. We have an assessment plan. We're going to be doing that three times in the year. And I think we'll be able to measure learning loss using that, which is really exciting to me, because it's a really comprehensive assessment plan. And then we're, I I'm documenting in that, that plan, everything that we're doing to address pupil learning loss. And then on top of that, there's another, something that's similar in the LCAP, and it's a, addressing specifically EL students, homeless students, foster youth, how we are proportionately offering more for those students.
So we haven't had a SARB. And I don't know how we, how we'll do that distant learning SARB. But we know already from March to, or April to June, how many the students that were not present in distance learning. Do we not, Superintendent? We do. So how are we following up with those students to see where they are at these few, few days? September is usually also the attendance awareness month. How are we following up with those students? Just to make sure that they are in distance learning and participating? Because we know, you have the, teachers know who wasn't showing up for their class, classes, do we not? So is, can there be a particular focus right now on those students who didn't participate when we were doing distance learning to see if they're joining in and participating active and participating on a regular, consistent basis?
So what's happening right now at the school site? I visited, I think, 90% of the schools on day, on day one. And what was happening? Principals were, were tracking attendance. Teachers were sending and submitting their names of students who who did not participate, doing parent outreach, calling homes. So with the distance learning plan, there will be a tiered engagement strategy for students who, and is required, any student who misses 60% of any given week, which is essentially three days of instruction, that the schools will then trigger their, their plans, whether it's through the cost teams, parent engagement, outreach, into identifying why students are not participating or what's the barrier.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm asking is reaching back to this last school year to identify the students who are not there. And, you know, and those are the students that are already more behind and probably think it's going to be the same experience and maybe not already participating. I'm just, I'm just worried how we follow up with those students.
I want to speak to you now with my principal lens, as I was last year, as we did this, went into distance learning. We did, we had students who fell off. And and we, as a cost team, I would say that our sites have really strong cost teams. And we wrapped around those kids. We called them every day. We went to their homes. We dropped off things. We pulled them into the Ed Hub to get supplies and such. And yes, some students fell off. I think that this year we have to start with the assumption that kids are going to show up for a brand new school year. I think a lot of it was, it was the end of the year, and some people just fell off, knowing that the year was ending. And so the minute that we start to see disengagement, we are going to respond. And I I feel pretty confident about that. And use our numerous departments. We're so lucky to have the Office of Family Engagement. We have strong cost teams. And we have a lot of people who are really willing to just go out there. And I I myself went and dropped things off for kids and pulled kids, tried to call people personally and pulled them back in.
Thank you.
All right, Director Sinai?
I have two questions. One is directly related to the LCP, and thank you for not calling it the LCAP. The other, I'm not sure if it's connected, but around the LCP is, is it tied to money? And how could you talk about what the, what the connection there is? Does it trigger an allocation or is an allocation contingent on the submission? And is that allocation different than the LCAP? Or is it, you know, so could you talk a little bit about that? And then kind of the, what I think might be an easier question? Well, they both might be easy, is, and I don't know, Superintendent, if this is for you, but are we still, are they still using October for like the CalPads? And how, how is the attendance impacting that whole process where we submit our numbers that actually triggered the ADA? Is that, is this connected? Is, is that, what's happening with those, with that process?
Do you want to answer, Dr. Stevens? I could answer.
Yeah, we can go in reverse order. Why don't I just talk about the ADA and just the general fund contribution to the district? So that has been suspended in effect. So this year, we're held harmless, and we're held harmless at the ADA rate prior to school closure in March of 2020. And then I'll turn it over to you, Michelle, and you can talk about the, the, the three additional funding sources and their relevance to the LCP.
Sure. The LCP does not require documentation of budgetary items like the, like the LCAP does. It does ask for, it asks for a list of action items, and those action items need a budget to them. But they're not, they're not asking us for a resource for that budget. So it's, it's pretty simple in that way. They do want us to account for our learning loss money that we're receiving from this, the government. And so we will, that will be documented, but again, not as extensive as the LCAP. I hope that helps.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Thank you. I assume when Associate Assistant Superintendent Paulinsby, when we've done budget presentations, there's been this, this allocation was in there, right? The last time we talked?
It was in the 45-day budget. It was in that, yes, approximately $5.2 million. You'll, acronyms, GEAR, coronavirus money, and I believe there's some general fund associated to it.
And SER.
SER, yes, SER.
Don't forget SER.
Yeah, I just want, really want to commend Director Sinclair coming on board and with the release of this new LCP template within a month. It's just been a tremendous amount of information and ed code change. And so it's almost on a day-to-day basis that we're going back, looking, doing additional research, calling CDE, calling counterparts, just to get more clarity. So it's been, it's, it's just evolving very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This has been really rich. Superintendent Stevens, I think we're ready to move on to the next item. I was going to suggest about.
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Director.
Okay. Mago?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering if you could go back to the last slide, the timeline slide? Thank you. So I just was wondering, so I know on September 1st, it is our responsibility to present the Learning Continuity Plan to our D-LAC and PAC parents. And I was wondering, especially since we've been having a lot of conversations about the potential learning gaps that there could be specifically with our Black and African American students, and also hearing the cry from the community to have a specific Black or African American parent advisory committee that the board presents to. Is there a plan to include that subgroup of of families in our LCP plan timeline to to present to?
Well, I'll tell you, the plan is that it, it, the, the state says that we have to engage our PAC and our D-LAC. And that is what we're doing. But I agree with you that, that I would love to have more people's input on this. But I think that the, because of the timeline, it's, I'm finding a really hard time. I'm actually holding both those meetings in one date, just so I can get it done, because the working time up until that is, is going to be really tight. So while I hear you, I feel really frustrated with this, honestly, because it's not the way I want to start my first PAC meeting, to be honest with you. But it's something that I have to do. So I do, I appreciate what you're saying, and I feel it in my heart, but I don't think I can fit it in, honestly.
We have to figure out a way to cast a wider net for feedback, especially from the families of our students who are identified as our most needy learners. And so I would encourage you, I understand that, and I want to recognize that you said that your hands are kind of full or tied at the moment with the deadlines that we need to, to make. But we also have to think about our priorities and who we are serving and the best ways to do so. And so I would like to encourage you, I understand that you're following what the state is saying, but encourage you to think about our students and who we're serving and what, what is needed to, what feedback is needed and who it's needed from to help move our district forward.
If I could, I might jump in on this one for just one moment. I think it's important to recognize that we're not starting the LCP process empty-handed. Prior to the summer, as we were planning the current distance learning plan, we had collected a huge variety of feedback from students, from parents, through town halls with African American families in Spanish, and then through the school planning process, as well as advisory committees that consisted of parents. And all of that feedback is really relevant to the plans that we created over the summer that in effect, we can memorialize in the LCP. So I, I hope to sort of convey the idea that we're coming into the writing of the plan with a great deal of feedback and not at all empty-handed as to the feelings of the community and the thinking about parents particularly to support students.
Superintendent Stevens, I totally appreciate that. And I'm really glad that you brought this up, Kedesa, because in some ways, it's kind of odd that there's a PAC and there's a D-LAC, but there is no equivalent for African American families as a D-LAC. And so I'm just wondering, I mean, I know you're super busy, Michelle, but I'm wondering if there's a way that we could fit in some kind of meeting with, I don't know if it's with PCAT or with somebody, either on September 2nd, on maybe before the 1st. Like, I don't know exactly what it would be, but, you know, just some opportunity. It doesn't have to be like a two-hour town hall, but at least like an hour-long opportunity to, that's well facilitated to allow families. Because it's true, like you got, you did a great job, Superintendent Stevens, of really getting a lot of input earlier on. And I understand the tightness of this schedule. But honestly, that earlier feedback, it's not going to be relevant. I mean, it'll be relevant, but it's not going to, it's not going to speak to this specific LCP.
Yeah. But one thing I want to say about the LCP is it's very different from the LCAP in that it is a report on what we're doing. It's not, it's not proposing things. It's basically a report on what our plan is for distance learning in the school year. And it is, it's, it's, though it's submitted, it is a fluid document. We're, we're invited to change it, to make changes to it. They specifically said that in the CDE. And I would like to do that. I want to also add that it will be posted on our website, and there'll be a means for giving feedback on the website.
You know what, Michelle? That's totally great, but, you know, families, particularly the families that we're talking about, it's, you know, it's not likely that they're going about, it's, you know, it's not likely that they're going to like go find it on the feed. I mean, very few families are going to go find something on a website and then comment on it. And so, I totally hear you, and it sounds like Director Brown and myself are both pretty interested in this. And so, maybe we can talk to you about helping you set up a meeting? Because I think we're asking that there be a meeting that is specifically targeted to African-American families.
I would agree too.
We'll come, we'll, we'll go back in calendar and figure out where we can best put that time in.
Thank you.
Even if it doesn't have to be, you know, the pressure on me is just, is it finished before I present it? But I wonder if it doesn't even have to be a finished document, but more to solicit feedback, you know, as we're going through the process of building this document.
I actually think that's better. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear you.
Do you feel okay about that, Director Brown?
I do feel okay about that, and I also feel really great about President Appel, you and I speaking with Ms. Sinclair on the side to figure out how we can come together and support whatever we need to support.
Great. Always fun to work with you. Okay, so that is, I believe, the end of that item. Thank you very much. And now, I was going to suggest that we take like a five-minute break, like a, just so that we can have a couple minutes to take care of any personal business that we might have or whatever, and then come back at 8:50. Does that sound okay to everybody? All right, I'll see you back at 8:50. Is anybody back? There's, I see some people are coming in now. There we go. So I hope you all had a nice rest, a little, got a little something to eat or went to the restroom or whatever you needed to do. We have one more item on discussion, and then we're going to go to our action items. And the last item on discussion is the first reading of, what is it? The, just, excuse me, the attendance and something. Can you help me out, Superintendent Stevens?
So this is-
I can't hear you.
Are you okay, President Appel?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I couldn't hear you. Nobody.
So, so this particular item, it's a first opportunity to discuss a potential new policy for the school district. It's called the non-school employment and incompatible activities policy. This is drawn from the California School Board Association. CSBA, as it's known regularly, puts out boilerplate policy for California districts, and so this is drawn directly from their portfolio of potential policies. The policy so far has had an opportunity for discussion at the policy subcommittee that took place on Thursday of last week. What I did, just to make it evident for school board members what the results of the subcommittee discussion looked like, I've highlighted a section in yellow that represents a difference between the subcommittee's thinking and the boilerplate policy as it's provided by CSBA. So I'll do a very quick presentation of the elements of the policy and then would welcome discussion. So the policy begins by establishing that for all employees of, of the district, that there are some activities that may be incompatible with employment. There are five of them listed out, and they generally have to do with activities that would interfere with the proper discharge of an employee's duties, where an employee might be compensated for duties that are also being compensated by the district, where an employee might be using the district's name or prestige to be able to generate private income, and that would otherwise interrupt with responsibilities as they're designated by the board, and then that would result in less-than-satisfactory conduct of the employment. The policy goes on then to ask that where an employee may be involved in activity that's incompatible with district employment, that he or she would seek the approval in writing of their direct supervisor. There is an appeal process, although not written out in detail, but there's an appeal process described here in the policy. There's also specific sections that would prohibit the use of the Berkeley Unified Logo or Name or Letterhead in any private endeavor to generate private income. It does permit our employees to work in third-party organizations or community-based organizations to provide education-like services. So for example, an employee could work with a CBO in a summer program or to provide tutoring. There's a specific section on tutoring, and this was the single section of the proposed policy that was amended from the CSBI boilerplate by the policy subcommittee, and that appears on the third page of the policy. And so, this particular amendment asks that an employee would attempt to refer family or a student who's seeking tutoring to any available district tutoring. And then the subcommittee amended the boilerplates to essentially prohibit our employees from offering tutoring or private lessons to any student who's enrolled in the district school or class. And that change specifically adds the word "district." Previously, the CSBA policy had included only school or class to the prohibited conduct, prohibited tutoring. And then finally, it makes clear that employees should not accept gifts from families or from other organizations in the conduct of their, of their work. So with that, it's a very brief overview of the policy. I'm happy to pause there and take questions. President Appel, you're meeting.
All right. That was a great summary, and do I have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes? Oh, but Vice President Alper and then Director Sinai.
Thank you. Thank you to the Policy Committee. Remind me, who, who is the Policy Committee? Judy, President Appel, Director Alper. So thank you all. I had one really quick minor thing, and then I had a more substantial question than minor thing, was that, I think, and I don't know if we've passed a CSBA policy in a while, but I think one thing we started doing was removing all the cross-references in them when it's finally done, because a lot of them, they didn't always match up with things that we had, and I think we found that some of the cross-references were to things that didn't exist in our district. So that's just a suggestion.
A suggestion.
Thank you. I have a question about the tutoring, and then I'm curious also the response to BFT President Meyer's concerns about the policy. So maybe just help me, somebody, understand what the change was from, from the CSBA language, which, which, Dr. Stevens, it seems to me is, is more than what you said, because if I'm, the straight, the language that struck through, which is the CSBA language, right? That seems to suggest that anybody, if someone comes to you as a teacher and says, I want to, you to tutor my kid, you first have to direct them to other available resources and then request authorization from your supervisor. And then if it's granted, you can't use district facilities. That seems pretty permissive. It doesn't suggest really any bar to doing it, except that you got to first direct people to, you know, existing tutoring. The language that, that's highlighted in yellow seems much more restrictive, and it says you can't do it. Employees cannot accept financial compensation for tutoring anybody who's enrolled in the district. So no district employee can ever tutor any BUSD student.
Right.
Is that right?
Well, that was our intent. Now, I did hear Matt's and the BFT's concerns, and I think we should probably talk about them here and probably the policy subcommittee, but I think our feeling was, like, like right now, there's this whole thing that's going on around these pods, and what we don't want to encourage is for people to be able to hire teachers to tutor their pod of kids when, and you know, the teacher will feel like, well, I can teach my class and I can do this. But it's really going to be an opportunity that it's going to limit their time available for their own study, their own work that they're getting paid for, and it is not going to be available equally to all students. So I do think we intentionally made it a lot more rigid. I did hear Matt talk about, like, that, some of the consequences that he mentioned regarding like music and other things that we, I don't think we talked about, you know, we just had one meeting. So I think, I don't know about how you feel, Beatrice, but I feel like we can, we can definitely go back and look at this, but our main intention for changing the language is that the original language of the CSBA only prevented somebody from tutoring somebody in their own class. But they could, like, all the second-grade teachers could get together and say, well, there's this pod here, they're looking for somebody, how about if you take this pod and I'll take your, the pod at your school? Or something like that. And we were trying to avoid that kind of, like, a trade-off. Not saying that teachers would do that, but you know, if, I could see one possibility would be, you know, if, if students need tutoring, or the students, the, the parents are coming to teachers to tutor their kids in these, in these kind of circumstances, that if they're not allowed to go to their, their own teacher in their own kids' class, that they will just go to another teacher. And we were trying to limit that. Does that, was that clear, Director Alper Cutler?
Yeah. Yeah, I was the one who brought up the part about use, utilizing, our teachers utilizing and our students utilizing some of the services that we do have in the district, you know, before going out there, or, you know. I think we have a wealth of, of opportunity right now to be able to direct students to, to the other things that are being paid through LCAP. So I think that that there, that I thought that that was something that, to include in this.
Right. And I think I was more concerned about the, in responding to the current situation, I don't know if I'm being too open about this, but in responding to the current situation that, you know, that we, we really need to focus on equity, and we need to make sure that, that we set up vehicles so that that, exactly that happens. You know, people get the support that they need through these vehicles, which we're paying for through LCAP or LC, I guess, LCP funds, or, you know, is out there in the community. And not, you know, I don't know, I'm very concerned about the, the impact of this pod thing. If it ends up, if we support it taking off, I think if it happens and parents do it on their own, all the more power to them, that's fine. But I think our involvement in it is really questionable. So this was to kind of help prevent that, just to be honest.
I totally get the, the purpose of it, and, and even, even in a normal situation without distance learning, I understand why there's reluctance to have our teachers being paid to tutor, paid by families to tutor certain kids, you know, who can afford that. And, you know, Dr. Stevens and I talked about this offline, about potential conflict of interest, for example, that that could raise. I, I would love to see maybe the committee take a look at- President Myers' concerns like about unintended consequences. And just to, I guess, just to say again or reiterate that the language that, that you all have in here is very restrictive, because it really, it doesn't allow any employee to tutor any student in any subject who's enrolled in the district. So I read this as even a math teacher who wants to, you know, tutor a private, private lesson, you know, in the ukulele or something, wouldn't be allowed to do that. It's just, and then there's no, for the other things, it looks like there's some kind of an appeal or it's generally prohibited, but you can ask your supervisor and if, and if the supervisor says no, you can appeal to the superintendent. And this section doesn't seem to include that.
But if it's for compensation, tutoring for compensation.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Teachers can stay late and, and support a student who, you know, comes into their advisory or comes into a planned time that they have in their schedule. It's, it's the compensation piece that.
Yeah. But what I heard, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, that was it.
Well, no, I mean, I, yeah, no, I get that. I mean, and there is also, I mean, I would like to hear, you know, some response to what he said about the music, like President Appel mentioned, the music teachers. You know, I don't know anything about that, but if that's the case, that there may be, there might be teachers who rely on, you know, I don't know who teach part-time and rely on private tutoring, maybe that's not a good model, but if that's what we have and we'll lose those folks, you know, it's at least, we should have. I guess one, my last question is, what's the urgency, the Dr. Stevens or President Appel? Do we, do we feel like we have time to kind of keep working on this? Because it seems important. Or do we feel like something's happening in the district that we need to stop right now? And we need to hurry and pass this thing?
I think those are very good points. I don't know what Superintendent Stevens will say. I don't think that this is like a huge problem right now. Excuse me, but if it becomes one, we want to be able to have this tool ready to go. But I do feel like, you know, we, I think having a good conversation with the teachers' union right now is a really good idea as far as the next step. Because I feel like, you know, maybe we can, maybe there's a way that we could figure out, you know, how we, how our equity concerns can be met and some of the needs of, like you're saying, part-time teachers who supplement their income by tutoring.
Sure. I'm open to that.
Okay.
Dr. Stevens, what do you?
That assessment about the timeline, we don't currently collect data on teachers out of work gigs. So we don't know that this is an urgent problem. And the purpose of sort of putting this up for discussion before ever bringing it was to identify exactly these kinds of issues and solicit feedback from, from our labor partners and others. So I think it's the right thing to do to continue to work on it. And then to think specifically about some of the examples that President Meyer shared today. Music teachers sort of advanced course, high school courses, where there simply may not be available tutors. And we hadn't sort of contemplated those particular scenarios in, in the Subcommittee. And so I think we've got time to continue that kind of contemplation.
Is there a way?
I'm going to call, well, you know what? I'm going to call on Student Director Miller because he has his hand up. Is that okay?
Thank you. I just, I've also previously talked about this with Dr. Stevens and I think it's not, I don't, right now, I feel like it's trying to assume an issue that could happen. But in assuming it can be a danger to some teachers and what they need to do in order to keep up their livelihood. And I also think that it's, um, it's, the main root of this problem when talking about equity is we need to make sure that certain families who can afford it aren't taking away the attention of teachers from other, from their original classes, which will then further bring down the students who already can't afford that extra help.
Right.
And I think we need to be able to establish something where teachers can be the judge of that themselves. But then administrators can also be the judge of that as well to be like, hey, maybe you're taking a little too much on right now. Because it will definitely, I feel like this policy is important because it will hopefully decrease that gap. But I also agree with the Vice, with Vice President Alper. It is extremely rigid and there does need to be some leeway allowed.
Okay, I'm going to call on new Director Brown.
Thank you. First, Director Lefkotler and Director Appel, thank you for your work on this, especially with your focus towards equity. I think one thing, you know, this is, it's challenging, like it's a challenging issue because on one hand, we want to make sure that we aren't perpetuating, you know, even more opportunity or educational gaps. But on the other hand, we also want to make sure that we provide a space for teachers. If tutoring is what they need to do to help pay their bills, you know, it's, it's just, it's a reality. But I do, I want to remind us of something, especially since you're in Student Director Miller's comments. We, in our schedule, we have an additional time for our equity moment to support students who need additional tutoring or who need additional support. And so I want to just remind us of that in our schedules. And just add that to the conversation. I would be in full support if the two of you are as well, as Director Alper proposed to maybe.
Vice President Alper.
As Vice President to maybe, if it, if it isn't an issue that we need to take care of tonight, to give some more thought to it and take care of it at a later date. And there was something else I was going to say, but Vice President Alper threw me off. If I remember again, please come back.
Okay, so I have Director Sinai and then I'm going to go back to Director Lefkotler.
Thank you both for working on this. It's, I think it's, it's a challenging topic, because I think, in all honesty, we have inequity now. And I really appreciate what President, BFT President Myers said in his comments around music teachers, coaches and the like. Right now, well, pre-COVID, we had people doing private tutoring with people who could afford it. So, you know, it's not like that's a new issue. And I think the work that you all are trying to do is to circumvent it from deepening the equity gap that in all honesty, exists in some areas already. I guess part of my question, and maybe, I totally support slowing it down and going back and taking the input from BFT and looking at where there seems to be some alignment and agreement around what to rework. And I guess part of it is the definition of tutoring. And if it's tutoring within the academic subjects, Mr. Myers talked about coaching, you know, is coaching considering tutoring? Music, I think, obviously would be tutoring because you're, you're advising around the curriculum. But he had a list of a number of areas where he thought there was some room for discussion. So I do also want to echo and support stepping back and having that conversation. So thanks.
Okay, Director Lefkotler.
Well, BFT President can also send his, his comments in writing that would help us to, 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 so that we'll read it. You read and, and listen to the comments and suggestions that are being given to us. I'm totally open to relooking at this and, and working with President Appel and bringing it back to the board.
All righty, is that okay with you, Dr. Stevens?
It absolutely is. It's been a very thoughtful conversation.
All righty, so are we ready to move on to the action items? On the action items, we have, I think, three policies.
So, you know, just to comment, President Appel, that these are, we're bypassing the, like, what we just did, that was coming back. This was just the first reading for this, for the, the previous policy. On these, we felt that they can move forward after, just through this first read. So we're not doing a second read on this. And so that's why they're coming as the action items, because we thought that they're, these are, don't have high discussion.
I think.
That would help support the COVID conditions that we're under and just learning.
Thank you, Director Lefkotler. For some reason, I don't have my agenda with me, but, in front of me right now. But I do think that that is the first item on the action items is to bypass the first reading. And so I'm happy to make the motion that we bypass the first reading on these three.
Can I clarify? It says waive the need for a second reading.
Yes.
Well, that's, you're right. There's, there's no first.
Generally, the policies go, we do a first reading, like we just did, we have a comment and then we come back. And then it either becomes part of an action item or already we put it on consent. So we are asking to waive the second reading so that we can move forward on this, on these items.
I mean, it's kind of funny, because in effect, what we are doing is waiving the first reading. Because we're waiving the reading where we have all the discussion, like just practice-wise. So we could either call it, you know, waiving the first reading and going right to the second reading or just waiving the first, waiting in the second reading and passing it on the first reading. So why don't we just be specific in the motion?
President Appel?
Yes.
I have a comment. Well, two things. One is, I don't think we need to approve a resolution. I think the policy allows for us to just approve a policy without a first reading if there's a two-thirds vote and it's on as an action item. So for any of these three policies, if the board votes by two-thirds, they're, they're on as action, they can be approved tonight. So I don't think there needs to.
So we don't need to do that if?
I don't think we need to do the.
You're such a smarty pants.
Well, I just remember when we revised this rule, so, but my, so that, so I think that's the procedural thing. I do have a.
Yeah, sure, go for it. Yeah.
So when. Thank you. When we revised this rule about policies, the policy on policies, it was, it wasn't intended that we would use, that we would bypass the first reading, except in cases where there was, you know, a relative emergency to do so. And I just, and so my, my question is whether that's the case for any of these three. It wasn't clear to me from reading them, whether they really couldn't wait until the next board meeting to pass. And my concern is not with any of these policies, but I just worry about the precedent that we're setting where we don't think it's going to be very controversial. So we're just, and we, and our votes tend to be unanimous. And we just end up not doing the first reading. And I think that it's important that we have a first reading. So, so I would like to know from any, from either you two or the superintendent, whether really we feel like any or all of these three need to be passed.
I mean, I think that we actually did feel that way, as we're trying to get ready and get things in order to plan for the new year. But, you know, I certainly appreciate what you're saying. And I agree that, that the, that the code section to have two readings allows for a full discussion. And then like, we're just like, we're going to do with that other, that other item, you know, you can discuss it, you can make some changes. But Superintendent Stevens, maybe the best thing to do would be if you can go through these three policies and explain what they are, and then we can make that decision.
Sure. And if I could just offer my quick view on that, Vice President Alper, and that is that with these particular policies and the bundle of four policies that the board passed about a month ago, it occurred to me just in reviewing our policies, that as we started the school year, that there were distinctions between the policies as they were written and the procedures we were enacting as of COVID-19. And so I was looking at the start of the year before we got too far into the school year, just to make sure that the policies at least included a phrase that allowed for the modification of the policy and its associated procedures because of these health orders. And it was only for that reason, not wanting too many days to go by where we might, from a literal perspective, be violating the policies because of the health orders to try and make these amendments relatively quickly.
Okay, that, I mean.
So just, oh, go ahead.
That makes sense.
About this, these, this, actually, this package of policies.
Wait, can I add one thing to that? I don't know. I think Director Lefkotler was also going to say something.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, like, that is how we did put that lens on things when we decided what to bring forward to request no second reading. But it's not like that's going to be a regular policy of the, or practice of the Policy Committee Subcommittee.
Got it. That totally satisfies me.
And in my, as I did the review of all of our policies, just in light of the health orders, this is the, the second and last of the sort of batches of policies that I would propose, could be sort of modestly amended just to account for COVID-19.
Okay, so why don't you go over what the three are?
So the first of these, let me make sure I'm following the order of the agenda.
It's use of school facility.
Thank you. Yeah. So the first of the policies has to do with, this is Board Policy 1330, under the Community Relations Section. This is on the community's use of facilities. Under normal circumstances, the policy reads that we actively encourage the community's use of our facilities. And the policy essentially commits us to a way to equitably, equitably ensure that community organizations are using our facilities. Of course, right now, we have to prohibit the use of our, of our facilities. And so that particular circumstance isn't contemplated in the policy. So we've added a single line highlighted in yellow so that it's clear to public and members of the board that just says that during a period in which there are orders from a state, county or city health officer that will imply, ensure the district's compliance with those orders and would therefore amend the use of our school facilities.
Okay, do you want to go through all three?
If you prefer me to, I'm happy to do that.
I think I would, I mean, is that okay with everybody else?
Yes.
Yep. Go ahead.
Okay. So the second of these policies, this is Board Policy 3550. This is in Business and Non-Instructional Operations and it relates to food services. Similarly, this is a policy that includes lots of language about creating, creating a welcoming and pleasant school environment for eating, about the attractive presentation of our foods. Generally, this is what we strive for in our Nutrition Services Program. Because of COVID-19 and the health orders, we've been forced to go to a grab-and-go meal system. And even if and when we can bring students back into our campuses, that's very likely going to be the meal distribution system. So just to be sure that there's no, in sort of from a literal reading, no violation of our own policy, we've included a line that says that we would ensure that our Nutrition Services Program conforms to state, county and city health officer restrictions. And then at the suggestion of the Policy Subcommittee, we've added another line. This is Item 15 in the policy that will, that emphasizes the importance of sustainability and the use of compostable materials when it's possible. And then finally, the third of these policies for this evening is about grading. This is a policy that was temporarily amended by the School Board back in March when we created a pass-no-pass system, particularly for the middle and high school. This would essentially revert back to our standard grading practices. And then we've inserted a single line that reads, if the district is required to alter the instructional program for students due to an emergency, superintendent shall ensure that the district's uniform grading system continues to comply with state requirements. So this allows us flexibility in the event, as we are seeing this year, that we continue to get new guidance from the state about the ways that we should grade or collect information about student participation and assignment completion.
So that was a really good and succinct description of the three policies. Are there any questions about any of them? All right. So I would like to like pass them separately. So will anyone make a motion to pass the first one on the agenda?
I will.
Seconded? Is there a second? Director Brown, seconded. Ms. Chides, you want to take the role?
First, our Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Miller.
Yes.
Director Brown.
Yes.
Director Lefkotler.
Yes.
Vice President Alper.
Yes.
President Appel.
Yes. So now let's go to the second, the second policy, which is.
Food service and children.
Services. And do I have someone who's going to make the motion to pass that one?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Director Lefkotler, seconded.
I'll second.
By, seconded by Director Sinai.
Director Brown.
Yes.
Director Miller.
Yes.
Director Lefkotler.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Alper.
Yes.
President Appel.
Yes. And now finally, the policy regarding the grading, the grading policy and practices. So I'm happy to make this motion. Does anyone want to second it?
Give it to her.
Is that you, Dr. Director Brown, or was that?
Yes, it was.
So I made it and then Director Brown seconded it. Director, I mean, Ms. Chides, will you take the poll?
First, Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Miller.
Yes.
Director Liva Cutler.
Yes.
Director Brown.
Yes.
Vice President Appel.
Yes.
President Appel.
Yes. All righty, good job, everybody. All right, now we are moving to the, are there any information items? Oh, wait, hang on a second. Oh, yeah. Yeah, are there any information items?
No.
Okay, is there anybody who wants to speak to the second? Are there any participants who are attendees who want to speak now and opens in a public comment period? Raise your hand, your little blue hand. Okay, seeing none, then does any of the board members or the superintendent have additional comments you wanted to add? All right, then I am going to happily adjourn the meeting at 9:22.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Great meeting, thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.